Technology did not work well for many of us. Maybe it's okay, though. Word and that does not work together.
Well, we're going to call to order the August fifteenth meeting of the trustees, okay, the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College. This is a rather important meeting for a lot of people. Is there any public comment? There is none. Okay. Item number three is a public hearing on the two thousand nineteen twenty proposed budget. This, following the governance meeting, this was posted on the TCC website for all to see. Is there any public comment on that? Okay. Thank you. Item four, approval of the minutes. We have a move by Dr. Morrison. Motion, a second? Second by Mr. Greenhill. Okay. Trustee committee reports. In the governance meeting, we discussed all the items that we have in the agenda today. So as we go through them, as we go rather quickly, maybe some of them, you'll understand that we have discussed it in full last week. Audit and finance, Mr. Greenhill.
Yes, the Finance and Audit Committee met on Tuesday, August thirteenth. At our meeting, our internal auditor, Nathan Ferguson, presented the fiscal year 2020 audit plan. This plan is a guide developed annually for the utilization of the resources of the Internal Audit Department during the fiscal year to address the risks that might be contained in the Tarrant County College District. The Internal Audit Department considers and weighs certain risk factors described in the plan to assess risk on each business area of a college district. Having an internal audit office is required by law, and the audits are conducted according to a certain professional practice of internal auditing and generally accepted government auditing standards. So this is a very serious matter, and we do it, we have a plan each year to assess certain risks, and what they're, they're based upon certain matrix, matrix is risks that might be in the, in the district. This year, the major items will be a review of the criminal history checks for employees and volunteers, review of compliance with tuition waivers and exemption policies, and review of the internal controls of our district safety program. As required by law, there is also a review annually of trustee expenses. However, there are no fees involved in this, just expenses. We reviewed, the committee members reviewed the policy, asked questions. We've, Teresa, trustee Ayala made some suggestions for some improvements in the plan. The plan can always be changed, but this is just a matter of getting it started and making a formal presentation for it. We, the members of the committee unanimously voted to recommend the audit 2020 audit plan for adoption by this board. And Mr. Chairman, for purposes of discussion, I make a motion which does not need to be seconded, that the board adopt the 2020 audit plan as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to announce the appointment of our Audit and Finance Committee for next year, and that will be chaired by Mrs. Teresa Ayala, Vice Chair, Mr. Bill Greenhill, and Dr. Michael Evans will also serve on that, on that committee. Consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee activities, my gosh. Dr. Morrison, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to just make one brief mention that often when trustees comment on an activity, we'll mention one or two names or one or two touch points. However, we fully understand that every activity engaged in by the college requires a complete corporation from many departments across the district, and we're ever mindful of that and ever appreciative. And so I especially want each and every employee to know how important you are to our total, our total view and our vision and our accomplishments. And when each of us is in front of a person in the community, we are TCC at that moment. So I just want to say thanks, and I want to share just a few pictures from a most successful six annual breakfast with our elders, which is an opportunity that the Community Outreach and Engagement Department at the Opportunity Center takes to embrace and engage the community in southeast Fort Worth in District Six and across the district. And you will see there, we engage students from Dunbar High School, we engage elders from the community, that's trustee Ayala and her beautiful ninety-plus-year-old mother, who was recognized as an elder this year, and they get the designation of WAVE, which stands for Wise Accomplished Valued Elder. And to listen to the accomplishments of the ninety elders, nineteen elders that we had this year was very inspirational, and it was enjoyed by all students and others as well. I want to especially thank the TCC Foundation staff who came and spent time with the high school students to let them know what their future could be at Tarrant County College. And this is Mr. Don Jewitt, who was an acclaimed art teacher in elementary school in Fort Worth, spent many years there, and these are two students, two scholar athletes from Dunbar High School. That is chancellor with the senior Mr. and Mrs. Ayala. They are such the life of people. He's ninety-two, she's ninety, and they're still both live independently and work and engage in the community. We're just so blessed to have elders like that, to communicate with the young people and to be a part of our lives. So thank you to everyone who worked to make this a rousing success.
Yeah, that's an absolutely wonderful event, and to me, one of the best things about it is you have so many young people there. You have athlete, scholar athletes, how many did you have this time?
Close to forty. And we had the senior class president from the TCC South Campus Collegiate High School with us, as well as a sophomore from that school, who both spoke very eloquently.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Mr. Ken Barr.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just report, I had the privilege of going to Washington last week and attending the Governance Leadership Institute sponsored by the American Community College Trustees Organization. Interesting experience, about, there were about a hundred new trustees there. Of all of them, about half are elected and half are appointed, and I think it drove home to me the diversity of what the entire community college industry, be my term, the activities are very diverse across the country, colleges of all different sizes. It was interesting, it was educational. Frankly, I came away from it convinced that Tarrant County College and what's going on here, we rank amongst the very best that are out there. And I say that from the board members that I know here and the people I saw, from the administration of what goes on here at the college, from faculty, and beyond that, the programs we're delivering here at Tarrant County College. So it was a good experience, I appreciate the opportunity to attend it.
Thank you, and thank you for going.
Well, thank you for encouraging me to go. Actually, Conrad told me to go, so.
Uh, Dr. Patrick.
Yesterday, we had the privilege of attending the chancellor's breakfast that was attended by over two thousand employees of TCC, and the great part about it was the recognition provided to so many. It was just very impressive. It ranged from recognition for years of service, which included individuals who have been with TCC for between five and fifty, yes, fifty years, one individual. Yes, there we go, right there. And we also saw the awards given to, for outstanding teaching from each campus, and I just have to say that we were all just so proud of all of the TCC employees who were there to be honored, and each and every one who were there, even the ones who did not receive a particular award, are very much appreciated and recognized for their excellence. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick. Ms. Ayala.
Okay. So Saturday was busy with back-to-school activities, as everyone knows, where TCC, once again, was able to continue to realize their goal of serving the community. At one event, the TCC nursing collaborated with UNT, TCU Medical School, and others at the Diamond Hill Community Center to administer sports physicals to more than one hundred students that are in the Fort Worth ISD and that live in that community. The nursing division conducted bilingual intakes. They took recorded blood pressures, they took weight and measurements, and height measurements for the physicians that were there on hand. And as I understand, this type of engagement is really is an extension of the vast clinical, hospital clinicals that the students experience. And it also provides them, I believe, a purview of the community through a health equity lens, to be able to see exactly what the real barriers that people are having to overcome and the struggles that they're dealing with to be able to have, lead a healthy lifestyle. So thank you to everyone there, especially the students. The one lady that's sitting on, seated on the bottom right there, she was actually getting her, she was actually graduating that same afternoon, and she came out and volunteered her time. So I just commend these students and the faculty for taking time to come out and volunteer at this event. It was very, very well done. And then also, there were some community outreach representatives there from TCC that were just able to share so many wonderful things about the things that we're doing here and to talk about the opportunities that we offer. Additionally, congratulations to the amazing, amazing, dedicated staff at Northwest Campus for your continued alliance with businesses, with ISDs, and then also the community in providing and hosting, I believe, over two thousand, is that right? Over two thousand students and their families were there on campus, and they were issued backpacks, and they were issued supplies and groceries and other essentials, and that really helps to level the playing field for those students as they enter their school on Monday. So thank you, Dr. Giovinini, for your leadership and your commitment to the well-being of the overall community, and we appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen, consent agenda. We have ten items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion, comments, questions?
I'd like to make a statement that we have, one of the items on the consent agenda is the consideration and approval of the investment policy, which is required annually. And at the board meeting, at the governance meeting, there was an opportunity to discuss in detail the investment policy. And so I think the requirements of law that we would review it has been done. I understand that there are continuing things that we need to talk about, and I believe that we're going to be doing that in the near future. Maybe the Audit and Finance Committee and our COO will be looking at it, and it's a continuing process, and we take it very seriously about how we invest our funds, especially also the mineral funds.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
You know, this, do I have, we have to, so move second. Okay, yeah.
Motion by Dr. Morrison, second. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Greenhill.
Yes, sir, I second it.
Thank you. Item number.
Um, we say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, any, all not in favor, say nay. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration and approval of deductive change order with Freedom Construction for Student Union Building Exterior Door Replacement Project at Northeast Campus in the amount of negative forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three cents.
Yes, sir, this is for the return of owner control continuously.
Any questions, discussion? We have a motion approval? And a second, okay. Item eight, consider, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Item eight, consideration approval of contract with Freedom Construction to provide renovation services for administration, police interview room remodel at Northeast Campus in the amount of one hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Yes, this is for space renovation for compliance and safety for our police.
Any discussion, questions?
So move. I make a motion to approve it.
Second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration approval of contract with Business Flooring Partners to replace the library's second-floor carpet at Northeast Campus in the amount of one hundred, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents.
Yes, sir, this will replace about nineteen hundred square yards of eighteen-year-old carpet, so it's reached its limit.
Okay.
Sounds like a great idea. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion made by Mr. Greenhill, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item ten, consideration approval of contract with Summit Consultants to provide design services for chiller and cooling tower upgrade at Northwest Campus in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars.
This will provide design services to provide specs and piping modifications to support new chillers and cooling towers and improve efficiency and needed capacity for future needs of Northwest Campus.
Any discussion, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Greenhill makes a motion, and second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mr. Parcheco. Item number eleven, consideration and approval of purchase agreement with Exlibris for Alma slash Primo software subscription in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty cents.
Yes, this is the annual subscription renewal for the Alma Primo software through Exlibris. This provides TCC students, faculty, staff with the access to all the libraries across the districts, the holdings both inside and outside the network.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Motion? Dr. Patrick moves. Do you have a second? Second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item twelve, consideration approval of purchase agreement with Edmonton for Plato Courseware in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, this is the software libraries are used by, for the district community education and engagement in their certification classes and their GED preparatory classes. This is a yearly subscription.
Any questions, discussion? Motion?
Make a motion.
By Mr. Greenhill, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration approval of purchase agreement with SHI Government Solutions for Tenable.io Upgrade in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Yes, this is a annual, this is actually in addition to our current Tenable software. This gives us the ability to actually monitor traffic in the cloud as well as what we have on-prem or on-premises.
Okay. Is there any questions, discussion? Motion? By Dr. Morrison, do we have a second? By Ms. Ayala. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item fourteen, approval, consideration approval of purchase agreement with General Data Tech for Cybo Security Appliance Upgrade/Stealth Watch in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Yes, this is a replacement of our current Stealth Watch server, which has come to end of life and into support. It also includes a yearly subscription for our security software that this application monitors.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Greenhill makes the motion, second by Ms. Ayala. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration approval of purchase agreement with General Data Tech for District Connectivity, Connectivity Core Switches in the amount of five hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents.
So over the next two years, we're going to be replacing all our core switches. This is going to be replacing the first nine. Next year, we'll be replacing the six, and that'll give us the R fifteen.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? We have a motion? So move by Dr. Patrick, a second by Ms. Ayala.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration approval of contract extension/ renewal with Ed Financial Services to provide financial aid call center and verification processing in the amount of seven hundred four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Five hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars of that is for calls, and one hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred is for verification/ audit fee.
Yes, sir. That, well, that is correct. We are requesting a renewal of the contract with Ed Financial Services to provide financial aid call center and verification processing for our students.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, I, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I missed the governance committee meeting. Can you tell me a little more about this process? It sounds very interesting and very useful.
So absolutely. We process all of the financial aid paperwork is processed for the students. When we've been, we outsource, which allows us to process everything more quickly in three to five days versus five to six weeks. They also support, have a call center that answers questions as students fill out their paperwork.
Okay. Dr. LeBong, just, this is a multilingual system. I remember we talked about that, and so, I mean, they can take it, yeah, multiple languages.
English and Spanish, for sure.
Okay. Do we know what is per call? Do we have an average of per call?
You know, I had that exact amount. It's, it's, and I may need someone to help me. However, what, what we get is a hundred thousand calls for five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and we get fifteen thousand verifications for a hundred and forty-seven thousand. And, and so that's, the sum of it is what we're asking for.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? By Dr. Morrison, second by?
Second.
Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventeen, presentation on the two thousand nineteen twenty proposed operating budget. Dr. Giovinini.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. I'll call your attention to the screen. It's my pleasure to present to you the two thousand and nineteen twenty proposed operating budget, and we'll move through, through the slides from a summary that the proposed operating budget, the recommendations, and I will cover, and then certainly ask the board to consider and approve of the resolutions. The proposed operating budget is made up of, you can see before you, I don't necessarily have to read to you, I want, do want to focus on the far-right have to read to you, I want, do want to focus on the far right columns, both the two thousand and nineteen, twenty column, as well as the increase/decrease, the last column there. Our state appropriations for the next two years have increased one point four eight six, two, three, six, each of the two years of the biennium, so next year, next year, this coming year is the first year of that. Our maintenance tax increase, that's our ad valorem tax for, has increased sixteen million, eight hundred and one thousand dollars and four, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then if you recall, last year, we had a tuition increase from fifty-nine dollars a credit hour to sixty-four. That did not go into effect until the spring semester. Therefore, we did not capture that additional revenue last fall. That's estimated to be at one point five million dollars. But the CEI holds steady at, at the numbers of two point six and one point four, a little bit more in interest income, and then other income is really related to our, our land and our facilities in terms of rental fees for eight hundred thousand dollars. So the total increase in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty budget is twenty-two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. So that's on the revenue end. The proposed expenditures are this for that increased revenue. A three percent salary increase of five point seven million dollars, an increase in the adjunct teaching rate and faculty, over full-time faculty overload rate of two dollars and fifty cents for one point one oh four. Faculty promotion rank via policy, we estimate that the implementing that promotion rank policy will be thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Fringe benefits on three percent increase is one million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Operating expenses are made up of personnel, equipment, technology, various functions that help us operate the institution, and you've, you've seen the, the detail on that previously, three million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Increasingly, colleges and universities are becoming more scrutiny related to Title Nine, and in particular, those items that are not necessarily intended to happen but do happen. And so because of that, we have pooled existing resources and then adding an additional fifty thousand dollars to our Title Nine compliance effort. Utility increase is estimated at seventy-five thousand dollars, and then stipends which were administered last year, this past budget cycle, will not be this come budget cycle, so that's where you see the decrease of two million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then future capital, we have talked about our need, desire to begin to plan for debt service of the future, and that twelve million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars does that. And so the total expenditures adding up to the, to twenty-two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Those, the summary is this, maintenance and operation, the increase is twenty-two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. The renewal and replacement is our, is our Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Fund Forty, that is a decrease for this coming year of ten million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we're not doing the same amount of work. The thirty-nine million of the previous year, there was a significant amount of encumbered projects which were expended that previous year, this past previous year. This year, we're not necessarily anticipating that happening, those encumbrances, that's therefore the decrease. The building fund, which is our new building construction, is an increase of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and one dollars, and then our auxiliary enterprises to a decrease of one point, one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So in total, if you will, if you look at the increase, it's actually ten million, nine hundred and one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consider each one of these items separately. Consideration and approval of the annual compensation plan, salaries and benefits. Salary schedule of three, three percent salary increase and a two point, five per hour increase for faculty overload and adjuncts.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I'd also like to thank the chancellor and the staff and everyone involved in this budget process. How long have we been, how many meetings have we met on this? Many, several, and it's been very well explained. We've had a lot of discussion, and I, I want to thank all of you for all the work, because I know that probably next week, you'll be starting on next year's budget. But anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three percent salary increase and two fifty dollar, two dollars and fifty cents per hour increase for facility overload and adjunct. Faculty, what did I say? Something else?
We have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Ayala, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. Consideration and approval of authority for the chancellor to set individual salaries and sign contracts, motion to approve. By Dr. Morrison, second. By Dr. Patrick. C. Item C. Yeah. I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, sorry. Consideration and approval for the authority for the chancellor to establish community and industry non-credit tuition and fees. Do we have a motion? So move by Dr. Patrick, second. By Mr. Barr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consideration and approval of tax exemptions for certain disabled and senior citizens. Disabled veterans, thirty percent disabled receive a five thousand dollar exemption. Those that have a fifty percent, a seventy-five hundred dollar exemption. Seventy percent disability is a ten thousand dollar exemption, and a hundred percent disability is a, is a twelve thousand dollar exemption. Other disabled persons, three thousand dollars. Persons over the age of sixty-five, a fifty thousand dollar exemption. Do we hear a motion? By, okay, by Mr. Barr, a second by Ms. Ayala, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and approval of the setting of the tax rate of zero point one three zero one seven, which is a point zero zero five nine decrease in the tax rate. Move by Dr. Morrison, a second by Dr. Patrick, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions. This may sound like a repeat, and it is. This reaffirms what we just did. First resolution regarding the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget, and the resolution is be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District that the Tarrant County College budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, twenty in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six, I'm sorry. Million, four hundred and fifty-five million. Little, couple zeros there. One hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars for maintenance and operation. Twenty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for renewal and replacements. Twenty-three million, one hundred and six, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the building fund, and four million, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for auxiliary enterprises. Be approved, and that a certified copy of the budget be filed at the state agencies as required by law, and that said budget be included by reference its entirety as a part of the minutes of this meeting. Do we hear a motion? By Dr. Patrick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty exemptions. Be it here resolved that by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College that the following tax exemptions for certain disabled and senior citizens be established for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Again, tax exemptions for certain disabled and senior citizens. Thirty percent disabled receive a five thousand dollar exemption, fifty percent disabled receive a seventy-five hundred dollar exemption, seventy percent disabled receive a ten thousand dollar exemption, and a hundred percent disabled receive a twelve thousand dollar exemption. Other disabled persons receive a three thousand dollar exemption, and persons over age sixty-five receive a fifty thousand dollar exemption. Do we hear a motion? By Ms. Ayala, second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next resolution is the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty tax rate. Be it so ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District that there be levied for the year two thousand and nineteen on all property owned within the boundaries of the Tarrant County College District on the first day of the current year, January first, two thousand and nineteen, except so much thereof as may be exempt by the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state. The following taxes, an ad valorem tax of and at the rate of thirteen point zero one seven cents of the hundred dollar cash value thereof estimated in a lawful currency of the United States for the support and maintenance of the Tarrant County College District. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Greenhill, and a second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
If I could get you to go back to item number eighteen and read it in as separate, Mr. Greenhill made the motion, but it was prior to you reading it in as a separate item. Number eighteen, on the agenda item. On your agenda.
Yeah, eighteen is broken up.
Yeah, no, you, you approve it separately as the budget, which is what Mr. Greenhill did, but you didn't read it in separately. That's why we just need to record it. And then you do the items separately. You can just read it from your agenda. That's all it is, from the board agenda.
Consideration and approval of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty operating budget?
Yes. Mr. Greenhill made the motion.
Do we have a second by? Dr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Monthly financial report. By Ms. Atlantis.
Good evening, and you received in your packet this afternoon the financial report. We're in the eleventh, we just completed the eleventh month of our fiscal year, and we've received ninety-nine point two percent of our income for the year. We anticipate one additional payment from the state, so we'll be ahead of our adopted budget for revenue. In addition, with the expenses, we're at eighty-four point one percent. We'll, we'll catch up to that a little bit after we do all the encumbrances and remaining expenditures for the month, and so we're in very good shape there.
Okay.
Okay, as far as investments go, there is a decrease in the pools of twelve point eight million dollars. We've just been holding a little bit more cash as of late, as we've been planning for the bond program. We're going to be working with our financial advisors to assess our liquidity and probably restore that position here soon. We had a yield of two point three seven percent, and also our weighted average maturity is at three hundred and forty-eight days. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, and I should point out also that included in your packet is the required report that's certified and conforms to our investment policy that, that's, you're, you're supposed to receive each month.
Any questions, Mr. Greenhill? Nope. Okay, thank you. Next item, rather important, consideration and approval of order calling for a bond election and resolution declaring intention to reimburse certain expenditures with proceeds from tax exempt obligations.
So as you're aware, this is intended to call the election for an eight hundred and twenty-five million dollar bond program for the November election. What I'm passing out before you is a substitution for the attachment A to this resolution, and the reason is, is that we've received draft polling locations, both for early voting and election day, that we've, that we're attaching, and I've got them to thirty-some pages, and so I didn't print all of those out for the group, but, but that acknowledged those as required in the resolution. In September, we'll come back to you, and we'll continue to get updates from the election administrator up until early voting, and we'll certainly share that, that information with you all.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? A motion?
I would suggest that the motion include, motion to approve, including the amended Exhibit A.
Motion by Mr. Barr, second by Dr. Morrison, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you.
I think there's a second resolution that we'll consider, or was it one motion with both of them, with the reimbursement? Okay, it was both of them, thank you.
Chancellor's report, Dr. Giavonini.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. Referencing yesterday's breakfast, I want to again congratulate all of those recipients for the awards of excellence as well as the years of service, and certainly very, very, very impressive. I also want to give a shout out to all the faculty and staff that helped support the production and the, the delivery of yesterday's event. That, that was all done in-house, and I think the professionalism was quite obvious, so hats off to a whole bunch of folks for efforts for doing that. Very, very well done, I appreciate that. I attended a few weeks back Tarleton State University's ribbon cutting for their new campus, and it's really quite unique for a community college president to be asked to speak at a university's ribbon cutting, but that really speaks to the, our institution and their institution's partnership, and the partnership in which our students are duly enrolled at Tarleton State University. Every credit hour transfer is program to program without loss of credit, as well as financial aid is, is really dealt with as a consortium. You don't find partnerships like that very often, and so our invite there was really a testament to the faculty and staff and the work that's been done over the years to, for us to engage with Tarleton. In addition, you passed this evening in a consent agenda, a lease agreement where Tarleton will be using some space at the Trinity River Campus. So the, the, you know, the space stuff is easy really to partner on, and for us to be out there and from, for them to come to Trinity is, is, is simple. What's much more difficult are those services that we provide to students in a seamless way, and so it speaks very well of the partnership and one we're very happy for. I also want to thank the hard work that has gone into the preparation of this year's budget. It was a six-month process, it began in February, and no, Mr. Greenhill, we're not starting tomorrow. I saw some panicked looks out there. We'll take a few months off, but it is a long process, and it does produce this product that you saw in two little slides, but, but frankly, the real value in that was the six months of the dialogue, debate, the engagement of folks in putting the thing together, and so there really is a great deal of cultural value to that particular exercise. And lastly, that you just acted upon the, the bond project, that was nearly three years in the making, with a lot of visioning, a lot of sticky notes, a lot of discussion and debate, and again, a very great cultural experience, and so my hats off again to the faculty and staff for their engagement and involvement in producing a bond program, and we're very much looking forward to that. There will be community forums related to the bond program itself. I'll also be at the campuses speaking to faculty and staff, as well as some community events in doing so, and there'll be more to come of that. You'll be able to see that on Inside TCC and follow that. But lastly, I want to thank our governing board, certainly for tonight's actions for, for the budget, for the salary increase. Your support, your confidence in us is greatly, greatly appreciated, and certainly this bond program is no short order. It's been since nineteen ninety-two where this college went out on a bond, and so the efforts of this board to come forward and support such are admirable. Thank you very much for the opportunity to execute that. Thank you.
And thank you and everybody here for all the hard work. Yes, sir.
I'd like to also welcome Jeff Lucel from McCall Park Houston-Horton, who is our bond lawyer. Thank you for coming from Dallas to be at this meeting. I'm glad. That's all right. Do you want, want me to ask you a question? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, thank you for coming, Jeff.
Yeah, there is no closed session today, but we would like to announce that the next governance meeting is on September 12th, and the next board meeting is on September 19th. We have a schedule that's posted on the, proposed schedule is posted on the website. Other than that, we are, do we hear a motion for adjournment? Ms. Ayala? Dr. Morrison? We are adjourned. Thank you.